We're gonna start with Erin, who's gonna give us a master plan. Actually, we probably should just call it a Rowan House update.
Good morning, everybody. All right. So our update for this month, we've been working away over in the Rowan House, what we call 2.3, making all sorts of noise and creating all sorts of traffic over there. So I'll show you some pictures, but we are complete with demolition of the existing structure. We are working on the underground plumbing right now, and we will be starting underground electric next week, and we are laying out walls and beginning wall framing. So the space is starting to come back together. What we're looking at here is where the new servary will be. So we cut up a bunch of the existing concrete slab, and all that plumbing is in for the new servary, all the kitchen equipment. We also had to put in a new firewall, a three-hour rated firewall, to separate the Rowan House structure from the current structure that we are in. So this is a picture of our new firewall, which was completed last week. You can see, it's a little tough to see in this lighting, but this area is the new concrete slab that we poured to backfill after the underground plumbing. That's where the restrooms will go for the new resident rooms. So the west wing is complete, as far as underground plumbing and pouring back the slab, and this is the south wing. Right now, actually, if you walked over there, you'll see a concrete truck sitting outside. We're actually pouring concrete back in there right now, but this was the south wing last week. And the corridor in the south wing, all prepped for the new concrete that went in this morning. And then, very exciting, we are framing walls. So this is a picture of the west wing. Actually, this morning, as of this morning, we've completed all of the resident room framing in the west wing. This was taken at the end of last week. Any questions? Yes. Where will the chapel be? It'll be on the far west side of the building, so if you walk back, kind of the back service corridor area, to your legacy dining room right now, there's double doors where we have plastic hung right now to kind of keep the construction dust. That chapel's just inside of those double doors. Any other questions? Yes. Where are they? I don't know. Are they in 2.2? They're all over the building, apparently.
So what we think is gonna happen, the question, just to repeat what Lou was saying, is where are the residents that are going to live in Rowan House right now? And so some of them are in Alderwood, some of them, some residents are in Waterford. We probably have some in independent living that will transition over. There's some in the greater community that will come in. We'll start kind of that process probably in the later part of the summer, just understanding who's going where and when. I think realistically, we're thinking January to open up Rowan House, so we have a little bit of time to work through that process.
Yes. Sorry, yeah, I probably, I use those words interchangeably, but they are a little different. So it'll be very similar to the, oh, sorry. She asked, what will the rooms or apartments look like in the, in the end product? It'll be a single unit, similar to Alderwood.
Waterford.
Waterford.
Yep.
With a one, a little, a small, little entry area. Each unit will have its own restroom, bed, and little closet.
What we know about residents who have dementia is that sometimes a smaller space is better because there's more comfort in, in those areas, and sometimes a larger multiple room, like a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom, the spaces don't get used and there's not the visual cues to get where you need to be. So we have designed these spaces to be studio apartments. I believe we have a couple of one-bedroom in the event that we have multiple residents, a couple that wanted to live together, but the intention is to really have the residents, we've, we've been very thoughtful about the, the common areas in Rowan House, the lighting in Rowan House, to make sure we can do anything and everything to, to help with sundowners or keep our circadian rhythms normal. And then programming will be very, very important. So we spent a lot of time researching, planning, understanding the common area pieces to make sure that people are engaged.
Yes. How many apartments will be in there? It is 16 total.
16 in one area and nine in the other.
Yes, sorry.
So nine in the area where the birds used to be. I'm directionally challenged where.
That's south.
South. Between Erin and I, we'll figure it out. So nine in the south, and that, the nine in the south will be double secured, so you'll walk in, they'll have a patio, but that, those will be the residents who need the most amount of love and support, and then the 16 will also be in a secured area, but those residents will be able to walk around and have a little bit more independence.
Any other master plan questions? All right, Tom.
Thanks, Erin.
It looks like you are up next.
Thank you, Erin. So we like to start off usually with a few statistics, just to give people an idea of how IT has been functioning over the last month. Interestingly, January was the busiest year since we've been, or busiest month since we've been tracking work orders, with 357 actually completed work orders. Resident work orders were actually up, we look at back and forth from the prior year to the current year. From the prior year, I am so sorry, that's the next one I'm gonna tell you about. This one is about the prior month. Prior month, resident closures of work orders were up actually 40% from 200 last month to 279 this month. Corey, many of you know, led the team with 121 closed tickets last month, and this is the one where we look back at last year. January of 2021 versus January of 2022 saw a 251% increase in completed work orders. And a lot of that is due to the new Tuesday, Thursday, open help desk times, people coming down. We continue to want to encourage people that can be mobile with their devices to come down. It's really allows us to be very efficient, just sort of one after another, so we appreciate everybody coming down to see us. But what I think people want to know a little bit more about is our Spectrum progress. Earlier, I think last month, month before, I kind of explained that they're doing a pre-wiring, then a backbone wiring, then we'll be set up to take orders and start doing installations. So in the preliminary wiring, we have A Wing, B Wing, and Waterford completed. Preliminary wiring in Alderwood is almost completed. We have still to wire the Flats, Riverstone, and the Villas. Riverstone will not be a very big deal. We're gonna be able to reuse a lot of the wiring that's existing, and the Flats and the Villas is really a matter of finding some underground conduits that we're working to dig out from the snow, so that we can run some needed cabling out to there. Estimated completion of the wiring from Spectrum, most recent end of February, and current estimate for the beginning of installations, March 16th. There is some work that has to be done between the finishing of all of the wiring and their system getting set up to receive us, that will make our installations. I think we'll actually be able to call maybe around the 14th, Rita, is that right? Start the requests?
Yep, so Tom's doing all the wiring, and Craig and I are gonna help with the installation process, so we've been, are you two gonna talk about this? Okay, so we are working now, you know, we, we've been having some elevated coaching sessions with Spectrum to make sure that the install is as clear and easy as possible. We have provided a roster to them, or will be today, when I get it finished, and the goal is, so we have to work with the, they call it the 100-pound gorilla, that is Spectrum, but we also want to make sure that it's very organized and process-driven once it comes to all of you. So we are going to be doing it by building. We're gonna start in Brandywine on the fourth floor. They likely, those residents likely will be the first ones to have things installed on the 16th, but there's a process that has to be done before. We have to have people call in advance. You are going to have a resident or a, a team member from Friendship Village of Dublin who's going to help you call, because as you know, sometimes Spectrum, you don't know who you're gonna talk to, so we are going to be with you to make those calls, to make sure that you don't get a new phone, for example, or a trip to Europe, I don't know, but we want to make sure that we have that very organized for you. So the goal is March 16th, we're gonna be doing seven days a week. It's gonna take us two to three weeks to get the entire community up and running. So we'll have, Brandywine will be done first. That'll probably take two to four days, maybe five, depending. Once we kind of understand the process, we'll do a better job. So we're liking it to the first time you got a vaccine. We worked really hard on that. Now that we know what needs to be done, we can move a little faster. So we're gonna learn through the process, but we're gonna be very systematic. They're gonna have four to six installers. It's gonna take about an hour to come in. I need you to start thinking about what devices you need to have hooked up. So do you have a phone? Do you have a printer? Do you have an Alexa? Do you have a computer? Do you have an iPad? Do you have speakers? Do you have, what other things? Roku's. We need you to start thinking about that, because we want to have all of that on paper and all of that ready, so that there's a list when the installer comes in of what needs to be installed, when, to make it very organized. So Betsy has drafted a communication for us. We're not done getting it to you yet, not done to have it organized, but I would say probably third week in February, you'll get some communication on what to think about, and then the goal is to start March 16th. It may not happen March 16th, it may be March 20th. We also understand that that's March Madness, and it might be exciting for some people. Your TV will be down about an hour in that process. So we are trying, right, we're trying very hard to think through anything that we can, but we're, we're not quite there, but we're making good progress.
The question was, is Spectrum going to supply telephones? And the answer is no. We are gonna stay with our current telephone provider, and then that will be moving to a, a new provider around January. Before that, probably, but I'll let.
What we're trying to do is make sure, so you already have a telephone, and the first thing Spectrum's gonna wanna sell you is a telephone, but you don't need to have a telephone, you don't need two telephone lines, we already pay that for you. That's what I'm implying with the, we want to make sure we're very clear as to what is needed. You're gonna get a very robust program. They've commented several times about how robust the program is, but for example, you're gonna get two DVRs. If you want four, great. We're gonna give you an option to upgrade to Spec, or HBO Encore, all of those, but you may not always want that. So that's why we want to have somebody there. We don't, we don't want you to have a cable bill of $50 a month, it should be zero.
Anything else? Yes, so the question was, what is the changeover like? What will happen is, they will bring in the DVR boxes, the new ones. They will unscrew the coax from the back of your TV, screw it into the box, verify some signals, you know, call home office, make sure everything's up and running, and then connect that box directly to your TV, verify that it's running. That part is fairly straightforward, is not that hard, but remember, we're also getting Wi-Fi, 400x20 Wi-Fi, so they will also be installing a little router and a Wi-Fi access point in your room as well, and that's why when Rita was talking about Roku's or speakers or iPads, whatever, we'll need to also connect all of those to the new high-speed internet at the same time, which is why an hour is about what we're estimating. The TVs won't be that hard, but it'll be connecting everything else.
Let me add a point to that. So the, the reason that we're doing it this way is that we, we remember last year when we converted to, from, what did we do? From retirement home TV to senior TV. Remember how it took us a day and several of you didn't have TVs? That's just not possible. So we're gonna have two TV systems for a month. So you, so when we do Brandywine, there'll be no interruption to Ash Run. It's only when we come in to do the conversion on that particular day, you're gonna know exactly what time, you're gonna know who's gonna be with you, you're gonna know all of those things. That's where your TV's gonna be down about an hour. But, but there'll be two TV systems over the next, from March 16th, realistically, probably through June 1st, really.
Yes, that's, so we're providing, I believe it's 233 channels on the base package that we're getting through Spectrum, and that includes like a gazillion music channels. They have a bunch of different music channels that are a part of their package, but they're 233. If you want Stars or HBO, yes, you would sign up for that. That, for those who are in Riverstone or the Flats, be very similar to their system. They get a base package. If they want HBO or Showtime, then they just subscribe to it, and that bill then comes to them. You can watch one show and record one show, or record two shows at the same time. So there are two receivers in the DVRs. How many shows can we watch and record at the same time on the Spectrum DVRs? On one box? How will the new system impact the internet? I'm sorry, I don't remember your name right off the top of my head. Gentleman said that his internet goes in and out and is a bit less than ideal. Would you say that's correct? Yes. So when I was mentioning that they're gonna set up a new Wi-Fi system in your apartment, that is going to replace our existing system, where everyone is connected to Wi-Fi via access points in the hallways. Right now, there is nothing inside your apartments that is managing that signal. With the new system, you will actually have your Wi-Fi point right inside your home, and it will be at much higher speed than we have now. So your internet should be completely free of drops, because the signal is being piped directly into your apartment. No, there is not, there is a question was, at this point, is there a box that has more than two tuners? Not yet. I talked to the Spectrum rep, and they said if those become available, they would be available to us, we could swap them out. That would fall under the no-charge policy, but right now, they do not supply tuners with more than two receivers. Okeydoke, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Good morning, everyone. I wanted to bring up referrals, as always. As you know, we're constantly searching for referrals, but I know it gets tough each month to rack your brains in your address books and your email lists for, to continually give us names, but we appreciate everyone that you've given us so far, because that's been very, very helpful. We've had some great engaging conversations with the referrals you have given us, but for this upcoming month, we thought we might do something different, and instead of asking you to give us referrals for people, we thought maybe you could give us referrals for groups that you may be part of. So whether that's civics, civic groups like Rotary or Kiwanis, or if you're part of a financial group, or a book club, or anything like that, a church group, that you think that that group might be willing to allow us to present to them about the community, either virtually or in person, we would love those names. And so that way, we can continue to do some outreach in the community, and if nothing else, spread the word about Friendship Village of Dublin, and it could be for independent living for those people at some point in the future, but it also could be about our assisted living and our rehab, and just basically globally explaining what Friendship Village has to offer, because those people might go out and tell their friends about us. So I would like to ask that you provide us with names of groups. We would do the same kind of referral reward program as we're currently doing, where if you do provide us with a group with a contact name and number for us to reach out to, to do a presentation, we will enter you in for the referral reward, but what I'm gonna do is one step further, is for any group that allows us to set a time to meet with them, we will automatically give you one of the referral rewards. So that way, if you do get a, a group of people, five, 10, 20, 30 people that we get to present in front of, you will automatically be a winner of a referral reward. So please, if you think of any place or any group that would be willing to allow us to speak to them, you can provide those names to myself, or Lee, or anybody on my team. You can email me, drop them in my mailbox, whatever works.
Can I add two seconds to this? So one of the things that I think we haven't done a great job of, and we can look back and say, well, why didn't you? Well, we've been a little busy with construction and COVID, is doing a better job of being out in the community. So talking about, it doesn't even have to be about Friendship Village, it could just be talking about being prepared for if and when some crisis happens. And so one of our goals in our, in our strategic plan and in our, kind of our mission, I think, is just to be a little bit more involved. Betsy and I met with Dana McDaniel, the city manager of Dublin, yesterday to talk about how we could be a little bit more involved in organizations in Dublin, and so this is just another step. But yes, it's gonna help hopefully with sales, but more, it's just being out in the community and talking about Friendship Village and talking about senior living and, and being good community neighbors. So we are very hopeful and appreciative that you may be part of an organization that maybe perhaps we could come and talk to, or talk about senior living. So we're, it's not a hard sales, it's a soft sale.
And not only that, like I recently did a presentation, a virtual presentation, to people who are considering the community, and it was a very general presentation, it's called the ABCs of Senior Living, and it really gave me an opportunity to help explain to people not just what Friendship Village is, but what the other communities out there are like, and what questions to ask as you're looking at communities, and I'm happy to even do that type of presentation, and we've gotten great feedback from it. We've actually scheduled, I think, three or four appointments from that presentation, just because people found it so helpful. So by becoming a resource in the community, people innately kind of want to learn more. So appreciate you giving us those, those contacts. Resuming new resident lunches, we had hoped to start those back in January this month, or this past month. For those who don't know, the new resident lunches are something we've resumed since I came on in April, and they're an opportunity for all the new residents who have moved into the community to have a lunch, to get to know each other and, and just chat and learn more about each other and the community. With COVID and our limitations on having groups together, especially unmask, we decided for January, with the way the cases had spiked, to, to delay that. Whether or not it happens this month, I think will still be to be determined, but I just wanted to let you know, we haven't forgotten them, they're still on our radar, but we will, we will inform you when those resume. Winner for the referral award for January, so as, as a reminder, everyone that gave us referrals for January, regardless if the person had already been in our system, got entered in for a chance to win one of our referral awards. So our referral reward winner for January is Millie Hart. Woo-hoo, Millie! So Millie, these are the lists of the opportunities that you can choose from, which we can talk about later, but reach out to me later and we'll, we'll get you hooked up with one of those. So, and these are the rewards I was talking about for the groups, too. So, thank you, Millie, I really appreciate it, and for all who provided referrals. And then lastly, to go over move-ins, in January, we had two move-ins, David and Alan Smiskel into A254, and Ellen Peterson into A236. Oh, hello! And then Lou Cavallaro, is Lou here? Oh, Lou's right there in the back. So Lou joined us here just recently, so if you haven't had a chance to meet them, please introduce yourself and hope welcome them to the community. Welcome, ladies. All right, and that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions for marketing sales? Perfect, thank you.
All right, well, our home team comes up. I wanna, we're a little behind, so who's on deck? Security, so just be, when, when they're done, you'll be right up.
All right, gotta stay on schedule. Good morning, everyone. I will keep my part short and sweet, so I have the privilege to introduce our restructured home care services team. So hopefully, you all know Jeanette, she has been with our organization since 2014 in a couple of different roles, but as of, what, last fall, transitioned as our home care services manager, and we know we needed to find a good clinician to, to partner her up with. So I, like, again, I want to introduce Megan Barrio. So she has been here since the end of December, so right after Christmas, I believe, she joined our team, but she brings, what, like 13 years long-term care experience? She started as an STNA, got her, and then went on to become an LPN, and then an RN. So she has done it all, so to speak, in our arena, but she, before she came here, she served five years? 10. Oh, way off. Okay, so seven years as a director nursing with Sunrise Senior Living, Assisted Living. So I will let Jeanette talk about our hours of operation, and then Megan can maybe tell a little bit more about herself, and then kind of go over our services. So we're really gonna make it a goal to try to be more present and involved with home care services in these town halls and other areas where we can share all the good services we can provide to you guys in, in your apartments.
Good morning. So just to reiterate, Megan, if you wanna, so I know you guys are familiar with home care services, but we did recently update our office hours to have a little bit more presence in the community, so our office is open from 8 till 4:30, and we do have nurses present at that time. We do, in addition to that, have our open clinics. I know the 9:30 to 10:00 AM has been present since before I joined the team, but we did add another half an hour around the lunchtime, from 12:30 till 1 o'clock, so if you have any needs to see a nurse, they will definitely be in the office during those times, and we do offer complimentary blood pressure checks as well. So please do stop by during any of the hours, but you'll definitely have a nurse present between the 9:30 and 10 hour, and then 12:30 till 1 o'clock again. And then we're happy to offer drug disposal, so that is actually a new service that we started offering this week. I know that's always a question that comes up, how can I get rid of any unwanted drugs, expired medications? So we are happy to offer that. Please just call our office, and we can set that up, we can have you come down, and we can dispose of your expired medications. Megan is gonna talk about some other services that we offer as well. Yes. I'm sorry? There will be a minimal fee to dispose of your medications, yeah. It's $27. Because it does take two nurses to dispose of your medications, it does take a special tool to dispose of your medications, so there will be a fee associated with that.
All right. So we're gonna go ahead and go over some extra services. So I'm gonna go over, we, as Jeanette said, we offer both nursing and companion services. So some of the companion services would be one-on-one companion, personal care assistance, medication reminders, personal laundry, linen changes, iron, household organization, seasonal decorations, escort to and from appointment times, wheelchair transport, mail pickup and delivery, and meal preparation slash order and delivery, as well as wellness and safety checks. Some of the nursing services includes medication management, coordination of care with your primary care physician, eye drop installment, wound care, injections, blood pressure monitoring, as well as, like Jeanette said, as well as catheter and ostomy care. So if you think of something that's not on this list, obviously...
obviously feel free to give us a call and we'll see what we can help you out with.
Megan, we talk about what you're doing when you don't work here, like going to school.
Oh, yeah, so I'm a full-time student as well. So I have about five months left. And I will be a nurse practitioner, God willing. So that's exciting. Yeah. Yeah.
Will there be nurses available seven days a week?
Yes, so seven days a week. Now, on the weekends, we do seven to noon coverage for nursing.
What, seven till noon?
Yep, correct. Okay. Any other questions? Nope, all right.
Yeah, we'll do some more questions at the end. So if you think of a couple of good questions, we'll be here for Q and A at the end. So I'm going to bring up Chris to talk some security.
I'm just going to go over some of our new staff members that we have. We have three new staff members. Everybody should have seen Ifra by now. She's on second shift. She's training on second shift. She just moved here from Minnesota. And actually, a fun thing about her is that she's a former wildfire fighter fighter. So she actually did wildfires in Montana and California. So that, I'm sure she has lots of stories. We just haven't had time with all the training and everything going on. Robert Nelson, he's our third shift weekend guy only. So he'll be here Saturday and Sunday only, so you may not see him as much. He's looking to get into criminal justice. So this is a brand-new position for him, a brand-new everything for him. He's currently working full-time at Zooli Warehouse as a picker puller, all that stuff right now. And then our newest member is Caitlin Simpkins. She's going to be also second shift, but right now she's training on day shift with Sean and me, myself and Steve. She just moved up here from Jackson, Ohio with her brother. And she's a current member of the Army National Guard. So welcome them as you see them. And we're working on one more person to finally be fully staffed. So I'll be really excited when that happens. So Angela will come up here for our next section.
Good morning. Chris flipped my slide, gave away my secret. So of course, I have the pleasure of introducing our February Associate of the Month, and that is Mr. Joe McCafferty. So if you'll come on up here, Joe. Quick round of applause for him. You know, Joe lives really close, but he's really sweet because he doesn't work till later. And he has his little daughter today, but he still came over here so that he could be with all of you. So we're grateful for that.
Thank you very much.
I'll ask a question of this room before he goes, but has anybody ever met anyone as cool in an emergency as Joe? Anyone at all? Very few hands, me either. So thank you, Joe, congratulations. We're so grateful for you and all you do for this community. So, yes, thanks, Joe. And just quickly, I just want to share with you guys a little bit about our events. So one little tidbit was, for this year, we started an associate planning committee. So all of the events in January, February, and March were actually planned by our associates. So that was huge. We've had a lot more engagements since then. And a lot of the things that we did were resident and associate events together. So I got a little note from somebody in this room that they love the carnation pass out that some of you are going to be helping with next week. And I just wanted you to hear a little bit about how we came to those events and what our intent is for the rest of the year. So that's pretty exciting. And if you haven't stopped in just yet to the fireside room, that will stay there for about another week. And then we're going to move it over to the Alderwood side so those folks can share a little bit of that history as well, so.
Angela, what is the resident carnation pass out?
So it's obviously in excitement for Valentine's Day. So some of the residents are going to pass them out to the associates just on that day as a quick thank you. And again, just to get a little love out there for Valentine's Day. So we're excited.
All right, Jess?
Good morning. Thank you. No, you clicked for me, thanks. I've got just two brief slides. My name is Jessica Rieker. I'm the Health Services Administrator. I felt obligated to say that because there's so many faces today, which is exciting to see our town hall grow again. Our positivity is going down and our participation is going up, which is a really great trend. I wanted to start by saying, I know this is an avid group in terms of reading our town hall bulletin, or not our town hall, but our weekly bulletins. So you may have seen throughout the month of January that we did have a resident active COVID case in both our Waterford Place, one there, and one in Alderwood. And so both have recovered very nicely. We can be thankful that we've moved down the variant train and chain. And Omicron has not been, it's been much more mild. So just for any of those that were wondering, they did not cause any kind of subsequent outbreak. Our associate cases are down. I'm sure you're looking at that in our weekly bulletin as well. And so our county positivity today is 12.5%. I think I mentioned in January's town hall that we were as high as 38% as Franklin County. And so we're seeing everything trend in a downward cycle. I want to mention in tandem with that that the visitation practices had come up at our questions and answers period just in the last month. And so I know there was some interest in understanding what visitation allows across our campus. And we are proactively encouraging that residents do move about the cabin, so to speak, on our 26 and some odd change acres. So there's just a couple of things that we ask. That there are other things, we're in the thick of flu season as well. So I know everything is COVID, COVID, COVID. But the common cold and the flu strains are out there. So the first and foremost message around visitation is, if you see or suspect signs of illness, please stay home. It's not appropriate to go anywhere. Wear your mask. And I see many of you that are in rated masks. So that's a KN95 or an N95 mask. So those are available down at the front desk if you're still needing one of those or yours becomes soiled. Oh, I'm sorry, the Rivers Edge Cafe. I stand corrected. So if you need a higher-rated mask than your surgical mask, you can obtain one there. When it comes to visiting other facilities on our campus, so the Waterford Place or Alderwood, we ask that you move through those front doors and that you check into those facilities. And that's because our regulatory compliance really requires that you screen. Even though you've screened or you've not gone anywhere, you haven't traveled off the campus in independent living, we do have some regulatory requirements that say you have to check into those buildings because we care for a little bit different of a vulnerable population there. So you'll see that Waterford Place and Alderwood, our residents are free to come through the thresholds of both of those buildings and eat in the legacy or the cafe or the bistro. We do encourage the connection in the community. We're very hopeful to start to welcome people through different thresholds of the building, specifically with Waterford Place. So I know Barb Holliday and Jeannie Joseph, they're working actively with some volunteer groups that have in the past helped in both of those arrangements. And we're excited to welcome some of those practices back. I know it's inconvenient for some, just the traffic patterns to get into those buildings cause us to have to walk outside. But I just want to encourage that the connection, the meaningful engagement, the rekindling of relationships is really worth the risk. And we were promoting and we're encouraging. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or any of our clinical leadership team over there. We'll help you get over there and reconnect with those living in the Alderwood and Waterford Place.
All right, speaking of being not feeling great, Betsy's at home with a little sick kiddo. So I'm going to take a stab at this her portion. So how many of you attended the scholarship committee or scholarship ceremony last year? If you didn't, you should attend this year, it was awesome. So this year, we are, the charitable giving committee, both at the resident and the board level, have designated $50,000 for us to give to our associates in recognition of their scholarships to school. So the applications are now available. If you know anyone in the community, you should very much encourage them. So we are hopeful to be able to give even more scholarships than we have in the past. The applications are due March 4th. There is a small essay that we've heard a couple of people say they don't like writing. So maybe if you hear that, maybe you would volunteer to help the associate with that. But applications are due March 4th. And then that will start the process. The, excuse me, the scholarships will be awarded in May. Correct, Angela? April, yes, so April, May for what those are. So please help us to encourage people across the campus. It doesn't necessarily have to be an actual associate. So if you have, if an associate has a dependent that is in school, we also encourage those people to apply. So if you remember, Steve Berry's daughter received, Steve is one of our landscape team people. His daughter received a scholarship last year. So please help us just get the word out a little bit as well. The other thing that I think has been very interesting with Betsy and the charitable giving program is about a year ago during COVID, we, I think actually the residents, started a COVID assistance program for our associates. And that has evolved into an associate emergency program. We obviously have incredible associates, but sometimes our associates have hard times. Their battery, car battery goes down. They cannot afford to get their battery replaced. And so this group or this program has helped 24 associates since 2020. We've awarded about $10,600. And last month, we had some additional applications that we had to work through the process to award. Many of our associates have, we've had a lot of COVID cases in the past and not working for several days. While they, while they can't work, they can take PTO, but many do not have that. So we did award some, some grants essentially to help just bridge the gap in those cases. So if you, if you, I'm not as good at this as Betsy. This is why she does her job and I do mine. But if you have any, any desire to support this initiative, I know Betsy would be more than willing to talk about that. So Seth, do you want to come on up?
All right, I'm back. I will, on behalf of Betsy, just say what we were just talking about, the hardship fund. I've been on the facilitating end of helping a couple of associates get that, those funds. And it's, I would call, high-impact, really makes a big difference, so. All right, I am going to talk about none other than Touchdown. What else is new, right? So I was approached by a resident exec council about adding resident comment cards to Touchdown. And that's actually something Jeannie and I first discussed when we started building out Touchdown. But we, again, had to lay a good foundation. So we're six months into it and we feel like the foundation's been laid. But again, this was really brought by our residents asking if this could be added to Touchdown. So I started working on it with Mitch Mitchell. And so the objective is to really increase participation. So the current resident comment cards, the boxes, that's not going away. I think that needs to be said first and foremost. So if you still like to grab one, write one out and put it in the box, those are still collected weekly, right? Every Sunday night collected and they, I know they're reviewed with Rita. Yeah, so Rita gets the review and then she hands them down to our leadership team. So we get that feedback in real time. So the objective obviously is now that we've got Touchdown, can we use it to increase participation? Using our computers to submit feedback. Responses to the questions can be combined and analyzed and automatic, automatically really generate a good database of some feedback. And it's really, we use Google Forms. So if you've used Ask FVD, that's a Google Form. That's pushed through and it's pretty easy to set up and has some nice analytics on the backend to help us track and trend. So this is just kind of an overview. If you, if you've been on Touchdown, you've probably seen we've added the resident comment card icon. You click on it, there's nothing there. There's a timeline at the end of this slideshow. But we're really just in the beginning stages of trying to build this out and do a thoughtful rollout with this program. But you can kind of see, the apartments are still the same as if you would check on a card. You would click on really the area you want to leave a comment or, you know, give an evaluation. And then you would click, let's use culinary mat as an example. So you click on there, the page pops up. You'll have an opportunity to leave a general comment for culinary. But what I think we're looking, working through is, with Google Forms, you can actually give some more specific comments and feedback based on areas. So that's kind of what we're, you'll see the timeline kind of vetting and working through in February of exactly how we want this to look. It just gives us a little more option. So the options would be, you know, I have just had dinner at the Riverwalk. I can click on the Riverwalk and then give some really calculated scores on food quality, temperatures, service, things of that nature. Again, all useful information for us as managers to really drill down and get some root cause analysis of what our, our issues or areas of improvement are in real time, so. Another example would be the store downstairs. So again, lets us break it out really by individual area, a little more detailed feedback. What happens to my comments? So behind the scenes, your comments are immediately saved to a database. Like I said, we use Google Forms. So that's all submitted through Google Forms. It's combined with input from other residents who comment. The comment cards from the paper cards will be added into that database. And then I think the next slide here will kind of show you what kind of statistical and graphical reports we can pull. Again, help us track and trend and drill down on areas of improvement for our operations. Reports go to the managing directors and then all of our managers and leadership teams, which really have the impact points for those areas of service. And then the resident council would present the information to the council meetings as well. And yes, so just in kind of a generic breakdown of what the analysis can look like, given this setup. And then again, automatic reporting in real time that we'll be able to track and trend. So it's easy to use. Click on the icon in the resident comments in Touchdown, select the apartment, rate the choices, add any written comments. There's a general section as well. And click Submit. And again, this is kind of our timeframe for rollout. So I just added the icon, I believe, last week. I'll be working to kind of build it out and how we want this to exactly look for March. And I would gather we would have some communication along the way. And maybe even another special session that we can do to walk any residents through once it is quote-unquote "live". And then certainly taking any feedback from there. So we're really looking for March as a formal release for this. And that's it. Andy?
How many residents, how many different residents are using Touchdown?
We do. I know I shared, I think it was two months ago, some metrics that Touchdown had shared with us. I can't recall the exact number, but...
574.
It was a lot. Well, I, so it can't really, the metrics are different because it looks at unique, I think that was, that was how many unique visitors we had. So I'll have to go back and look. But I do believe last time, Jeannie, I had asked Jeannie, I mean, we had a pretty high participation rate, better than we thought we would.
Let's do this. If you use Touchdown, raise your hand. Everybody in the room.
Okay, much better, Rita, thank you. We'll take the straw poll next time. But again, we, as we roll this out, always want to be thoughtful to all of our residents. And I think that's, you know, we're not doing away with anything we haven't already have in a paperback process. We're just trying to add another avenue of feedback. But I know we also have a couple of other exciting things we're going to roll out. But I know we also have a couple of other exciting things we're going to roll out for Touchdown here in the next two, three months, working with Jeannie and her team. So we're just looking to continue to add.
Stay right here. Let me just do this and then we'll do some questions. So Seth, Craig and I actually just saw him walk by. We had a comment last week, do you know that we're free people as of February 1st?
Yeah!
Yeah! Do you, do you feel any different than you did in January? Bummer. I thought it was going to make us a little lighter.
Less email. I get less email, right?
Less email, yeah. So one of the things that we had to do when we transitioned away from LCS is our insurance. So our property, our general liability, our auto insurance, all of those things. The building is, anybody have a guess at how much this building is valued at? $750 million. So we have a lot of insurance that we spend. Carrying Communities is a group, they are essentially a captive of high performing CCRC or life plan communities like ours around the country. We are the 71st member in the group. We did buy in to this, so essentially it's a captive. And if we perform well, it will help us not only keep our costs low from an insurance standpoint, but there will also hopefully be a dividend provided to us each year. So they are actually here today, yeah, last night and today to help us just get onboarded, to get the process started. But I think I talked about this in the last meeting and there was some confusion about it. So it's again, something that's very much behind the scenes, but I didn't want to provide any other miscommunication or confusion regarding our insurance. So the good news is we have lots of it. The better news is that you don't feel it. And the third thing is it's, I think the program will be pretty robust and help us from that standpoint. We'll take questions and Barb, you can go first. So we'll, let's repeat it and then we'll let Chris answer it. So two things, what happens in the event of an emergency? What do you do first? And then how do you get the squad or the emergency professional into you? So we always say push your button first. Unless you know that you are actively having a heart attack, push your button first, let us come and help you. If you also need to call 911, you need, you can do that. 911 can't get in the building without security. So we'll let them talk about what happened.
So as soon as you guys push your pendant or pull cord or any, any way of communication to my department, we respond immediately. On average, it's three minutes or less for my team to respond to you guys. From that assessment, a light assessment that we'll do, then we will then call medics for you if needed. If you have extra services that are already provided and don't need medical attention right away, then we'll go to those other services. So if you're with COPC, we will make sure we contact COPC and say, you might want to call this resident, verify what's going on. Or if you have home care services, we might go down and talk to Jeanette and Megan and say, hey, you might want to follow up this person. Ava does all that stuff too. So any reports that we make, they review them all and they do follow up with residents on anything that may have happened. So does that answer your question? So the squad will get, come in, we'll let them in. There's two security that respond. So that's why we'll hang outside the room, you'll see us in the hallway and know we're not going to share information. I know everybody's worried about their friend and what's going on, but we're not going to share what's going on with them. It's their private, it's HIPAA, it's all these other things that are going on. So we'll stay with the whoever's on site and then the other one will bring the squad in and then we'll wait for the medics to do their job and then we'll escort them out. So when they come in, we always direct them to the closest door. So Steve or whoever's out there, we'll meet them at Dirksen or at the front and we'll direct them to the closest door to the apartment, the easiest access to get them there.
I want to just say one more thing. So we very much encourage that you let us help you with this. Because Chris, what happens after the squad leaves? Like what, where does that email go?
So it goes to all of our leadership group, it goes to COPC, it goes to home care services. Everybody's involved, so we can do our at-risk meeting and we're very up to date on what's going on with the residents. We secure your apartment afterwards, if there's nobody, if you're single or whatever and there's nobody else in the apartment, we'll make sure that's secure once they're left.
And that email goes to the COPC admission desk essentially at Riverside or Dublin Methodist. So many cases when Chris or his team members send, send this email, it goes to the intake at COPC at the hospital. So they know that there's a Friendship Village of Dublin resident who's on their way and they need to go and take care of them. So it's, it's, there's multiple triggers that go when you push your button, you just, again, don't see it. Once you're in the hospital, there's a whole nother thing. And Lee is working on putting together, Lee, Jess, Megan, Jeanette, myself, a whole bunch of people, finally working on your life care document, which we're hopeful that we can have ready for you in the fall of all of the things that happen. Because you have a very big, wide safety net if you go to the hospital. Once you're in the hospital, we start tracking you. Are you coming back to Alderwood? Are you coming back to home care? What do you need? How do you need it? All of those things. So push your button is the moral of the story. So if you know that you are having a heart attack or a stroke and time is of the essence, you can call. We very much are recommending that you let us do it. But if you know that you're having a stroke, don't wait the three minutes, call them. But we're going to also follow up and say, she's having a stroke, send the stroke, stroke unit. I can't smile, raise my hands up. And so we very much are encouraging you to press your button. The only reason that we would ask that you send, call the EMTs without us is if you are having an active emergency where time is of the essence. Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Schwinniger. Did you have a question, Joe? Oh, okay. Yes, Michelle.
We currently do not. We're all private pay, but that is part of our strategic plan to review that. The question, my apologies, since with the restructuring of home care services, will we be Medicare certified? So can we bill insurance? Can we bill Medicare? We cannot at this point. It's all private pay, but it is part of our strategic plan to relook at that.
To relook at it. So when we think about Medicare, Medicare is not just something that you can get tomorrow. It is a very, very intensive process to get what we call an NPI number. So we have an NPI number in Alderwood and that's how we get our Medicare dollars and that's how we're able to utilize that. We're going to look at it and see, we had an NPI number in home care several years ago under the leadership of John Schwartz. They let it go. It's, home care agencies are very hard, the margins to operate. We're going to look at it. I think we see the value in having, being able to bill home care. I just don't know if it's feasible to do. We are working with some partners to see if we can do a better job in coordinating the care, but that is something, I love that you asked that question. Seth and I literally have been meeting on this probably weekly for a while. Good question. One more question. Yes, Joe. Well, let's ask Angie. The question is that there are several residents in Waterstone that have had inconsistent water pressure in their kitchens. And we've looked at it and maybe you could give a little update on that.
We have had the architects that actually took care of and designed Riverstone and we've had several plumbers on site. We have one last thing, the last, we had our water tested and they said that our water is hard over there. So we're trying every last ditch effort before we put in the, the water booster because they're not even guaranteeing that that is going to work. So we are working diligently on trying to find out, it's very frustrating, I know, but we are, we are trying to get a resolution. That's why we're trying to figure out exactly what the problem is. They think that maybe there's some debris settling in the line. So we're trying to eliminate everything before we try that, the water booster. That's kind of our last effort. Yes, we're waiting on quotes for the water softener and then a specialist, a water specialist to see if it's even going, because it's, there's a range of water hardness and we're like right in the middle. So we're not, the water's really not hard enough to cause the water issue. So, but we are diligently working on it.
Thank you. Yes, Pat. Occupancy rate. We are at 268 out of 304 on a budget of 272. One, two, what is it? Two, 272. We, the sales and marketing team have done a really nice job and I think we have lots of new residents here, so which is, we're very appreciative. I think our goal, so our, our budgeted goal by the end of June is 277 units occupied out of 304. We would like to be at 287 out of 304. Well, we would like to be at 304 out of 304, let's be real. But we're stair stepping up to get, 287 is kind of our threshold and that's where the shortfall from independent living is not as burdensome or difficult on all of the things that we are working. But yes, 268, I think we have five people who are scheduled to close in the next 60 day and three in paperwork. So we have eight people who are going to be moving in in the next 60 to 90 days to start. And then we'll, you know, more people want to move in, we'll say, come on in. Yeah, go ahead. Window replacements, who wants to take that? Andy and Angie are both in the room. It's a little cold right now. Yeah.
As soon as the temperature gets up to 40 degrees and stays, they have to finish the masonry work and the sealant and everything that they're putting on the masonry. It doesn't, it doesn't, yeah, adhere if, if it's colder. So as soon as the temps get up, they will do the masonry work and then the windows will go right behind it. I will send out a schedule so everybody knows who, whose floor and the schedule, so. Yeah, we do have windows, they're with the contractor, so they aren't in the middle of the Atlantic somewhere, they're here.
Thank you. All right, one more question, if you have it. Yes, Chip. When's the next round? Well, I'm pretty sure most of the cabinets have been replaced. If you- Come on, this was such a good meeting. Angie should just stay up here with me.
We are working with the contractor to come in and get those replaced. With COVID and everything else, it's delaying everything. We thought we had the problem solved, but then we keep getting reoccurring additional cabinets that are peeling, so. But I will keep you posted as well on that, just as soon as we find out when the replacements are in.
The questions are, when are the rest of the Riverstone cabinets going to be replaced? And the answer is, we love the supply chain and staffing shortages, it's so much fun. Okay. I hope you all have a great month. I appreciate your patience. Next month, we're going to get you some good information on TVs and we're going to get that crossed off our list and then we'll keep working on the rest of them. Have a great day.